Let's start again.
Roberts rules. There with me just a second. This is what happens when I come with minimal items so that you're abiding by COVID. Nominations. Nominations don't have to be seconded. But it's not out of order for members to second a nomination. Then nominations are closed. And then a vote is taken.
So I move that nominations are closed on vice chair.
All right. Nominations are now closed.
Do we need to second that?
Second.
Right.
Okay. All right. So all in favor of closing that vote signify by saying aye will move by ward through that.
Aye.
Aye. I go last, I'm sorry.
Aye.
I've forgotten.
Aye.
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 And aye, nominations are closed. So now we will take a vote. Now the preference of the board will stand for that being that we're masked and everything. Would the board prefer to take one at a time and vote on that? Or would the board prefer to move by ward and each person name who they are voting for?
Neither's fine.
Neither's fine.
Neither's fine.
Just make the call.
Okay. Moving, then what we'll do is we'll move by ward and state the name of the person that you are voting for as vice chair. Everyone understand?
Yes.
Uh huh, okay. So moving by ward, we'll start with ward one.
Uh, Ms. Johnson.
Okay. Ward three.
Who's ward two?
Me.
You're ward two.
Ward three, I am voting for Dr. Andrea Shelton.
Ward four.
Ward four, Dr. Shelton.
Ward five. You, you do have.
Vote for myself.
Okay.
That's right.
Ward six is vacant at large.
I place to vote for myself.
And I'll vote for Ms. Johnson, so that's. One, two, three, three to three, that's a tie.
How about if we table this for the next meeting?
Okay. We can do that, we can table to the next meeting.
Table which part to the next meeting?
To the vice chair?
Reorganization, so would we have to table? I'm asking, not an attorney present, that's starting to bother me. Are we tabling the entire organization? I guess, because I'm asking why are we tabling the vice chair if we chose in reorganization to move forward with the chair?
We had a, we had a majority vote on the chair, we do not have a majority vote on the vice chair.
Okay, can I hear from Roberts rules on when we have a tie? I would feel more comfortable hearing what this Roberts rules say when you have a tie versus table. I believe you pulled that before for us, ward clerk? Oh, you don't have it with you?
Roberts rules stated that when you have a tie, the motion fails.
Okay, so then the motion failed.
Correct. And that was the motion for vice chair.
Right, okay.
So we.
So we want the record to reflect that the motion failed.
Right, we do not have a vice chair. Right. So we can either call for nominations again, or we can choose to revisit it at a future meeting by tabling it.
What would be the will of the board? I guess I'm trying to understand the rationale, you made the motion, Mr. Hall. I as a ward member, trying to understand the rationale to table.
Uh, just so we don't spend a lot of time going nowhere.
Okay.
That we could give it some time. So I'd like to make a motion that we table vice chair vote until our next meeting.
I second.
We have a motion and a second before us, is there any other discussion? Moving by ward, all those in favor signify by saying aye, nays have the same opportunity.
Ward one, aye.
And so you're ward two, right?
Uh huh.
Ward three, nay.
Ward four.
Four.
Oh, that's right.
That's right.
Aye.
Aye.
Same.
Aye.
Aye. And aye, so that motion carries. We will, do we want to put it back on the agenda for the next meeting? Which will be July the eighteenth?
I would say the sooner the better.
I, I agree.
Yes, we need to get that done.
I agree. I agree. July the eighteenth then, Ms. Moore, if you will make note to have that added to the agenda for the July eighteenth meeting to select a chair.
Vice chair.
Vice chair, excuse me, thank you. All right. Moving next, we have the approval of the agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Can we go all the way down to the end, Ms. Moore? Trying to see what's the end under the business, I don't, I, I'm looking at it here.
Is your business by school board, I believe that's on there?
Business by school board members, yes.
Okay.
Can you get it? There you go. Any questions, any further questions on the agenda? If not, I will entertain a motion.
I move to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye by ward and nays have the same opportunity.
Ward one, aye.
Ward three, aye.
Ward four, aye.
Ward five, aye.
At large, aye. And ward two, aye, that motion carries. Next up is the actual organizational plan of the board. Of course, we go through this every year. We'll start, does the board have a preference on how to start by going through this? You wanted to start at the top and work your way down, do you want to look at committees?
Well. We do not have a full board, so is that something that the board wants to table? Or do we want to tackle that this evening?
I would support that.
Which one, to table it?
To table that.
Because I'm thinking these are a lot of committees and you really need a working board.
I agree.
People who are going to get on there and do that. So I move to table the organizational plan for committees of the school board.
I second that.
We have a motion and a second, do we have any discussion on that? Moving by ward, all those in favor signify by saying aye and nays have the same opportunity.
Ward one, aye.
Ward three, aye.
Ward four, aye.
Ward five, aye.
At large, aye. And ward two, aye as well, that motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Hall, under.
You're welcome.
Because I was thinking the exact same thing you were. We want everyone to have an opportunity.
Right.
To find their best fit when it comes to those, I totally agree. So that moves us back up to the top, first page of our organizational plan of the board. Now, as we're looking at that first page, there are a few of those slots. Such as the CSEP board, the Governor's School Board, the Athletics Regional Governor's School Board. The Hampton Roads Education Telecommunications Association. Those, while not committees, those are boards that boards, board members do sit on. Do we want to go ahead and look at those? Or do we want to leave those for now until we have a full board?
I would say to leave those, because we just made a motion to not entertain that this evening.
For the committees, that's correct.
For the committees.
I agree.
Yes.
I agree on that as well.
We can start thinking, I would say the board start thinking about it.
Absolutely.
Looking at it, doing the research.
Absolutely. So that moves us, we have chair and vice, we have chair appointed, we have vice chair that we will be revisiting, we've already looked at both of those. Next would be clerk of the board, do we have? Do we have a nomination for that, or a person we would prefer to fill that role? And before we start naming people, would, we like to go through and look at these and say if we want them to stay as they are? Because I, we've done that in the past and then voted on it all at one time to leave all of these roles the same, or how to change them? Or do you want to take them all one at a time?
Or what are you referring to?
The clerk of the board, the agent for the school board, the superintendent's designee, the designee to sign documents in the absence of the superintendent.
Well, I would be comfortable taking care of the board clerk, but we would have to lend ear to the superintendent, Dr. Sterling. As to who she would like to.
Correct.
Having those roles. And so I don't know if Dr. Sterling is prepared to do that this evening.
I don't know.
Okay.
So do we want to go ahead and look at those individually? Or do we want to go down the list and then make one motion all at once?
I'm trying to find it, hold on.
You.
It starts under where, where does it start?
It's at the top, it's the third item on the first page, starting under vice chair.
Chair, clerk of the board. I think we take them individually.
Okay.
Yeah.
So clerk of the board.
I move that, to keep Ms. Tammy Moore as a clerk of the board.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Moving by ward, all those in favor signify by saying aye and nays have the same opportunity.
Ward one, aye.
Ward three, aye.
Ward four, aye.
Ward five, aye.
At large, aye. And, and ward two, aye as well. Ms. Moore, welcome back, Ms. Clerk. Next up, superintendent's designee, Dr. Sterling.
Uh, Mr. Jeff Rider, and um, the chairman, I think he approved him at a previous meeting.
We did.
Did send that information up to the seat.
We did.
We did, uh huh. Um, and then next behind that is designated to sign documents in your absence as well. Jeff Rider.
So I move at this time, that Dr. Tamara Sterling will remain as the agent of the school board. Mr. Jeff Rider, the superintendent's designee. And Mr. Jeff Rider is designated to sign documents in the absence of the superintendent.
We have a motion. We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Moving by reward, all those in favor signify by saying aye and nays have the same opportunity.
Ward one, aye.
Ward three, aye.
Ward four, aye.
Ward five, aye.
At large, aye. And ward two, aye as well, that motion carries. The only other two items that leaves are the voting delegates for the Virginia School Boards Association. That is not pressing right now.
No.
Um, but we will need to look at that within our next two meetings, because there is a deadline on the submission of that.
Well, a, the, it's typical that the chair is the voting delegate. We've taken care of that this evening, however, we have not taken care of the vice chair.
Correct.
So we would have to table that as well.
Correct, I agree with you. Do you want to take the voting delegates? And go ahead and?
I move that the voting delegate to the Virginia School Board Association will remain as the chairman of the school board, which is Ms. Amy Phillips.
I second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye and nays have the same opportunity.
Ward one, aye.
Ward three, aye.
Ward four, aye.
Ward five, aye.
At large, aye. And ward two, aye, excuse me, I abstain. That motion does carry, five to one. All right, so we will revisit once we have a full board. Vice chair. CSEP, Governor's School for the Arts, Athletics Regional Governor's School. Hampton Roads Educational Telecommunications Association, the alternate for V S B A voting. And the remainder of the internal boards and committees. Anyone have anything else on that, or any other questions? All right, moving next is our twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one meeting schedule. As that stands right now. We typically in the past have had our work sessions within the school board office. And our regular sessions in the, in city council chambers. Of course, we all know what the last few months have been like with COVID around. This is what we normally would present and utilize for that. But I want to entertain how the school board feels about meeting in person. Are you more comfortable, because we do still fall under the state of emergency and are. Are capable of meeting virtually if necessary? Or would, do you prefer meeting in person like this? What are you more comfortable with?
I would definitely say to limit. The school, if tonight, I think would be the decision, before the last couple of years, the school board convened once monthly. Then we went to twice, work session, regular meeting. If we're going to keep a work session and regular meeting, I would say that it would be my recommendation to at least do one. In person, but not meet both times in person, that's just my recommendation.
I think that's a wonderful suggestion. Anyone else have anything?
Um, my biggest concern, I don't mind meeting in person, I mean, I think there's plenty of room for, you know, who's in here now. But I know that normally we have a wonderful turnout from, you know, staff, because we do recognition. And they do a great job at reporting out, you know, what they've done and what they're working on. And we have students, you know, representatives who come in. And I don't want there to be unnecessary risk, you know, for them. Because of the limited space.
And so Ms. Johnson, I would agree. I would agree, then I would say that the school board would have to make that determination, that we would make the determination based on the agenda.
Right, I wouldn't want them to feel like, you know, they're obligated, or, you know, whatnot. They could, like, we have enough technology where they could, you know, record it and send it in. And I would encourage them, you know, to be creative with the ways that they report out to us. So that, you know, they don't have, they don't have to be in here and we don't have to worry about the crunch. So, th- those are my thoughts. Because I was counting people that, you know, are usually here, and I was like, oh my gosh, where are they all going to be? You know, I know there are red dots on the seats, what if they all show up, you know? So that was a concern. You know, and of course, absolutely, of course, if something happened and we saw a spike in cases. You know, we, I, I think we're smart enough that we would choose as a board to say, you know what? We need to pull back and we need to not meet in person. We need to do this virtually for ev- the safety and health of everyone.
And I think something else that could happen, Ms. Johnson, you raised a question earlier, was the board polled? The board could be polled for each meeting. Based on what's going on with the governor making the announcements, what's going on in the community, whether or not for the upcoming meeting. If the board is polled in enough time, it gives the public, gives Dr. Sterling enough time to pull her staff together and team to make that decision. But tonight for us to say we're going to meet in person, I don't think we should say that.
I, 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 I agree. Let, why don't we, why don't I make a suggestion? We have another meter, meeting later this month, that's scheduled right now according to this to be here. Would our board prefer to meet here on July the sixteenth? Or would our board prefer to do that virtually?
Because of the logistics, if we have our other board members in place, and that is going to be the time where we're going to be. Doing the organizational plan, that's something that, you know, is easier for me to see and you, I would rather do that, like, in person.
I'm not sure that council will have appointed those by then, because the nominations aren't being announced until the thirteenth.
Okay.
So I don't think they will, in three days' time, I don't think they'll have a special meeting and appoint that quickly.
Okay.
Because I'm sure they're going to want to interview people.
Okay.
So I, I don't think we'll have a full board yet by July the sixteenth, I feel co- comfortable saying that.
Okay. Well, that would be a meeting that I would like, I would feel more comfortable having in person, because of, you know.
Once we're all seated.
Looking, looking at it and being able to go back and forth, like, well, this is my strength, well, this is mine too, well, no, I can give this up, what can you do? You know, instead of having to go back and forth and mics being muted out and that sort of thing. So, whenever that may be, if we're not going to be doing that next time, then, you know.
I would, I would like to say, if they're meeting on the thirteenth to, and entertain nominations in the next meeting, which would be July the twenty-seventh, is I think when they would make appointments. So that would mean we should hopefully have a full board by August sixth. So looking at that timeline for now, that July sixteenth meeting, what is the will of the board? July sixteenth in person or July sixteenth virtual?
Virtual.
Unflexible.
Unflexible too, I, I would rather do whatever.
And see, remember, something else I want to raise, the, Ms. Phillips, you sent out an email before stating that if we chose to meet in council chambers, board members could still meet remotely.
Yes.
So no, no one is required. So if board members tonight say, okay, I would prefer remotely. We could still meet in council chambers, some people could be meeting remotely, some people could actually be here.
We are still allowed, each board member is allowed to call in to at least two meetings per calendar year.
Well, I believe there is an exception with COVID.
I didn't see where an exception was made.
Did you see that, Ms. Moore?
I did go back and look for that.
So then we may need to. Well, then with, if that's the case, because we don't want to use that up. Then we would need to make a decision.
Yes.
I thought there was an allowance due to COVID that the boards couldn't meet remotely.
Yes, I think it did. They all do.
Yes, it, we can all meet remote, because I went back to verify that, to make sure.
Well, then if that's the case, we would have to make a decision. Are we meeting remotely or we're meeting face to face? So that no one is penalized later. For having used that time during.
Right.
The pandemic.
Uh huh, I agree. So I.
So I'm going to go with, to, I, I move that the school board's next meeting be remotely.
Okay. We have a motion in regards to the July sixteenth meeting being remo- Okay. We have a motion in regards to the July sixteenth meeting being remote, um, virtually. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? By word, all those in favor signify by saying aye and of course, nays have the same opportunity.
Word one aye.
Word three aye.
Word four aye.
Word five aye.
At large aye. And word two aye. So we will, our July sixteenth meeting will be virtual. Um, being the August sixth meeting, what I, i- if the board is okay with it, what I will do is shortly after the July sixteen, the city council meets on July the twenty-seventh. Yes, July twenty-seventh. Um, if I will get back in touch with everyone depending on whether they appoint or whether they have vacancies, um, and touch base with everyone to make sure everyone is aware of what city council has done. And I'll poll the board to see what your preference is for the August the sixth meeting. Will that work?
Yes.
That's fine. Okay. And I think for now, we'll play it by ear. Um, if COVID miraculously goes away, we could only wish, um, the meeting schedule as it is presented to us, would we be okay with that meeting schedule?
Yes.
Mind you, there is flexibility with that.
Yes.
Okay. So do I have a motion to adopt the meeting schedule as per ti- as presented contingent upon COVID?
I move to adopt the two thousand twenty, two thousand twenty-one school board meeting schedule as presented, understanding that it is subject to change due to COVID.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, I have a question.
Okay.
Uh, we did not ask the superintendent. Oh, I'd like to know what the office of the superintendent's recommendation. Is this your recommendation, Dr. Sterling, that we can, that the school board continues to have a work session and regular session? Do you think the school board needs to just have the one meeting? Or would you, do you want us to, the board to continually meet twice a month?
Well, I appreciate you asking my recommendation, but it is up to the board to decide. I mean, for the past three years, it has worked to our advantage to be able to see the information more than once and make a conscious decision on it. So I would recommend, uh, continuing to move forward with that same schedule. But again, as a patron, I will, um, respond to whatever it is that the board has to do.
I just wanted to hear from you. Yes. Thank you for that.
Alright, we have a motion and a second before us. I will call for the vote. All those in favor signify by saying aye and nays, of course, have the same opportunity.
Word one aye.
Word three aye.
Word four aye.
Word five aye.
At large aye and word two aye. Our meeting schedule is adopted. Next up is the V S B A sample code of conduct. Um, typically every year as part of our organizational meeting, we go over the code of conduct, um, which I am more than happy to go over now. Um, question for the, question to the board is, do we want to go through with signing it at this point or do we want to wait until we have a full board?
Wait until we have a full board.
Wait.
I move to table reviewing and signing the Virginia School Board Association Code of Conduct for school board members until we have a full board.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Moving by word, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Nays have the same opportunity.
Word one aye.
Word three I abstain.
Word four aye.
Word five aye.
At large aye and word two aye, that motion carries. Next up is the V S B A Code of Conduct for school board clerks, which we do have that, so we can take a look at that. Um, again, this is, uh, every year we, um, also look at as part of that reorganizational meeting, the V S B A Code of Conduct for school board clerks, um, which is presented there before you. That walks through the integrity, um, and challenge before the school board clerk and what that individual i- is expected, um, to do as, as that role. And we can read through that if the board so wishes. Um,
No, I, I don't think it's important that the board reads through that.
I agree.
I think that is to Mrs.
I was gonna ask, Dr. Hall Leonard, would you mind reading it?
Well, no, I think it's important that Mrs. Moore, 'cause she is the board clerk. Hold up, we're talking about V S B A Code of Conduct for school board clerks. I'm not the school board clerk, Mrs. Moore is. So I'd like to have Mrs. Moore say, I will have integrity. You following? That's why I'm sitting. I don't have a problem reading it. But we're saying, we're talking about the school board clerk. She's here tonight.
Correct.
So she's able to...
Ms. Moore, would you feel comfortable doing that? Okay.
What'd you say, Ms. Moore? You had to mask?
She doesn't mind.
Oh, okay. 'Cause if not, I didn't have a problem reading it, but I'm like, she's here.
Good evening, board. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to serve you all and be here. And reading, I've read through these and will read it for the public, um, the V S B A Code of Conduct for school board clerks, school board clerks. As clerk of my local school board, I will strive to be an advocate for students and improve public education. And to that end, one, I will have integrity in all matters and support the full development of all children and the welfare of the community, Commonwealth, and nation. Two, I will keep correct and proper record of all the proceedings of the board and shall prepare such reports and keep such accounts as are required by the Code of Virginia. Three, I will notify the School Boards Association of the names of newly elected or appointed school board members in a timely manner. Four, I will come to the board meetings informed concerning the issues under consideration. Five, I will communicate in accordance with board policies, public reaction, and opinion regarding board policies and school programs to the school board and superintendent. Six, I will refrain from using the clerk position for personal or partisan gain and avoid any conflict of interest or the appearance of impropriety. Seven, I will respect the confidentiality and privilege information and make no individual decisions or comments that might compromise the school division. Eight, I will be informed about, about current educational issues through individual study and participation in appropriate programs, such as those sponsored by my state School Boards Association. Nine, I will always remember that the foremost concern of the school division is to improve and enhance the teaching and the learn- and learning experience for all students in the public schools of Virginia. Therefore, I will always strive to demonstrate appropriate behavior con- or and conduct at the school.
And Ms. Moore, are you so inclined to sign that for us?
I am.
Thank you very much. And also, thank you, Ms. Moore, for continuing to serve as our board clerk.
Yes.
You've done an outstanding job for us and I, I just wanna take this opportunity to say thank you.
Yes, she is. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Alright. Next up is the vouchers for payment. We've got a, um, we've also got underneath that and we'll look at that after the vouchers for payment, the policy on procurement. And this, um, this is actually, um, a request by the superintendent for a motion and this is amending policies in regards to small purchasing and procurement and purchasing authority. Um, these are the policies that are outlined that that does impact and I believe the policy is also right behind that.
What is the rationale?
I was getting ready to ask Dr. Sterling if she would, uh, mind approaching the podium in regards to the request.
Oh, okay. Um, a motion is deemed to authorize the superintendent to act on board. This is something that we bring before the board every year in approving payment to vendors who have been approved by the board according to F C P S policies and regulations. And the superintendent will present the paid vouchers, this pertains to the vouchers, to the school board acceptance. For your review, you have the small purchases, purchases for procurement, purchasing authority, purchasing procedures, administrative regulations regarding purchase orders and payment procedures. I would also request, um, and again, this is, um, routine from every year. However, I would also like the board, uh, request that the board look at the policies for purchasing because a couple of years ago, the board, uh, voted to decrease the amount that the superintendent has to authorize without coming to the board. Uh, previously, it was upwards of sixty thousand dollars. Um, when, um, more than three years ago, um, before I became, uh, superintendent, the threshold was lowered to ten thousand, which means more purchases come to the board for approval. So I would like you to look at that and reconsider, uh, lifting it back to where it was prior to twenty seventeen.
And what was it prior to twenty seventeen?
Sixty thousand.
And so I guess I'm, I'm not a, is it, I don't think that it's been a problem having the purchase orders come to the board. I guess I'm trying to understand why we need to go back. Dr. Sterling, help me.
It does restrict the superintendent to make purchases and at this time, you've been receiving a lot of polling.
Okay.
Uh, and through, and even throughout the year,
Because of that.
you'll keep receiving a lot of polling of the board instead of, uh, the superintendent is authorized to purchase up to this amount and then providing the information to the board that, you know, this was purchased.
So you're not asking us to do that tonight? You said you want us to take that into consideration.
I don't think tonight is appropriate.
Okay, thank you.
But I do feel like it is something that I would like the board to consider.
Thank you.
And we can consider this a first reading of this, um, but that, I think, might be something that we want to discuss. Um, and that, we could do that at the next meeting. Um, I think specifically what we're looking at is on that first page under the policies, it would be the third paragraph. Purchase orders in excess of ten thousand dollars shall be approved by the school board. Um, that's specifically what you're referring to, Dr. Sterling?
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure. Um, and looking at if we do intend to or consider raising it, what level will we pre- be comfortable raising it to? So it's kind of a twofold. Do we want to and what would we be comfortable raising it to?
So then my next question would be whether or not we are, the recommended action is still to authorize the superintendent to act on behalf of the board because both of these are under, um, three point one, the vouchers and the policies. So tonight is the recommended action to just to move forward with the vouchers or the recommended action is to move forward with the vouchers excluding the policies, come back and view that later? Or to have both of these as a first reading?
Well, the, the one label that vouches
You following because it's both under here?
Yeah, the one labeled as vouchers for payment is what the re- what the request for review is, which is the, those, um, policies D J through D K. Um, and then the other document is the actual policies.
I'm following you. There are two attachments here.
Mm-hmm.
But they're all under three point one. So I'm asking, Dr.
Right. The recommendation is approved of superintendent's authority for vouchers under payment as it is currently written. But I'm also asking the board within upcoming meetings to review them. And you can change that and then we can vote.
So you want us, your recommended action is to move forward with this tonight?
Yes, please, because we do have work that has to be done.
Okay.
I, I, I was gonna ask if, I mean, could we go ahead and make the motion? 'Cause I was just thinking that, y- you know, if, if this was something that was done, you know, prior to her coming, you know, into the system, of course, I wasn't on the board at that time. But since I've been on, on the board, you know, we've been fiscally sound and I don't know that we've declined any of the requests, um, that have come our way that we've, you know, been polled for. Uh, so the decisions that are being made in, in that office are ones that, you know, we're agreeing to. So I feel, you know, confident, a- at least from where I'm sitting, that i- if we, if we raise it back to that, then those decisions are gonna continue to be competent. We're not in a bad spot. So, I mean, if it doesn't have to be the first reading and it's okay to make a motion on it, I'm okay to make a motion on it tonight to elevate it back to the sixty thousand.
No, I'm uncomfortable with that. I take the chairman's recommendation that we use, have it as a first reading. So I guess I'm, let me just make the motion, make this clear. I move, I wanna take the recommended action. Were you gonna say something, Dr. Sterling?
And we can always come back and revisit the policy and change it. We can do that. So we can approve her, we can approve this so that she has the authority to act on her behalf for the vouchers. And if the board so chooses as part of that, we can choose to revisit as part of the motion, the policy at our next meeting as well.
I move to authorize the superintendent to act on behalf of the board and approving payment to vendors who have been approved by the board according to the Franklin City Public Schools policies and regulations. And the superintendent will present the paid vouchers to the board for acceptance with review of policies on purchases at a later date.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Moving by word, all those in favor signify?
I, I did.
Okay.
Is there another motion allowed on the floor at this time or does this one have to fail? I'm unclear as to how that works.
We would have to vote on this and if the motion fails, then we could have another motion.
I understand.
Okay.
I think the ten thousand is too low. I think the sixty is too high. So somewhere in the middle, we have to find what that is.
And that's the reason my motion says, let's approve this tonight, then come back later. Okay?
Dr. Hall Leonard and I were on the board with all this.
Yes.
There were good reasons.
Yes.
They're not good now, but...
And I think it was a great safety net that was put in place at the time, given the circumstances. And I feel confident that as a board, we will revisit that and there will be adjustments made. We just need to make sure that she's able to go ahead and proceed forward at this time until we can come up with what that should be.
Yes.
Alright, I will go back and ask for a vote. Uh, moving by word, all those in favor signify by saying aye and nays have the same opportunity.
Word one aye.
Word three aye.
Word four aye.
Word five aye.
At large aye.
Word two aye, that motion carries.
Thank you.
Now, while we're still on that before we move forward, is it the will of the board to bring this back to, um, before the board next week to look at that policy? And the, and look at possibly a revision of that amount?
Yes, yes.
Okay. Ms. Moore, can you make sure that is on the agenda for the next meeting? And board members, if you can go ahead and be thinking about what looks and feels uh, as a good amount from your perspective, that way we can have that discussion at the next meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Sterling. Alright. Next up is our consent agenda. We've had, of course, at year end is always a busy time. We've had several items come before us on the consent agenda and we'll just, um, take a look at those real quick.
And I have a question about that before we do so.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. I don't know if it's a question, it may just be a comment. Um, typically, the, when we are presented the consent agenda, and this is fairly new for the board, um, our chairman has kind of gone through each of those items. Am I correct?
Correct. That way the public is aware of what we're looking at.
Yes, of what we're actually approving. Um, however, I guess just going, moving forward in a new fiscal year and all, I just want to kind of throw this out there that is it most appropriate for the chair to go through these items? Or is it most appropriate for the superintendent? I'm asking. Because typically, it has been the role of the superintendent. The superintendent has kind of gone through what you have done, Mrs. Phillips,
Right.
uh, to help the public, uh, for transparency, is you've kind of gone through and you have, uh, asked, lent to the superintendent at times
Mm-hmm.
for clarification. I just wanna throw that out there. Um, but it is... Um, but it is, this is the school board's meeting.
Correct.
But we are making actions on the superintendent's recommendations. So my question, or I don't know if this is more of a to have a discussion, is it most appropriate to have the superintendent or the superintendent's designee go through these? Or is the school board most comfortable, and I know Mr. Holt had kind of, wasn't on the board when we moved to consent agenda? You follow what I'm saying?
Yeah, I'm willing to entertain whatever the preference is of the board, um, being that it is our agenda, and typically, the chair leads the meeting.
Yes.
That is why I've moved through the consent agenda, because it is our meeting. Now, whatever is the will of the board, most certainly, we will go with.
And I'm comfortable with you, I'm one person, moving through the agenda, but there are times when I, you know, because we talk about in governance, not getting into weeds.
Correct.
There are times when I think it's most appropriate that some of the things that you're trying to explain is really the role of the superintendent.
I understand where you're coming from, I, I-
I just wanted to throw that out there.
I, I really appreciate.
That we kind of just need to be careful as we tread that we're doing our part and that we lend to the superintendent on some-
And I completely appreciate where you're coming from with that, I do. Um, and whatever is the will of the board, I'm, I'm absolutely comfortable with.
And it maybe means that you're continuing to move, move through it.
Right.
But you're lending more to Dr. Sterling and her staff.
Right.
To kind of come in, interject, answer questions.
And I'll pull Dr. Sterling into that conversation too as well, if you don't mind.
Yeah, it may be something that you wanna talk about later, you know, but I, I don't know, because there's some, some times I hear you going through it, and I'm thinking, okay, well, that's the superintendent's role. And then there are times when it's truly the school.
Dr. Sterling?
Yes.
I'll bring you into that conversation.
Thank you, uh, I'll, I'll, I'll applaud that. Um, as we move this year, we move towards the board, um, I know we are a governance team, and I am here, I am a resource for the board, that's why we have these planning meetings, so the chair and the vice chair will know what's on the agenda. The chairperson controls the agenda, that's why when it comes to the above, um, ten thousand dollars, I put out the recommendation or I poll the board and I provide it to the chair, because I cannot approve that, it has to go through the board. But I will always be here as a resource, but that is something that in our, in my role, I dialogue with the chair and the vice chair during the planning meetings about what's coming up, because again, this is the board meeting and I'm just here as a resource.
So you would prefer, I'm asking, because we, you would prefer that Doc, that, that Mrs. Phillips, as, or, or whoever the chair is, you would prefer that the role of the chair on the consent agenda is to basically be able to explain, give detail about what's in the consent agenda? I wanna make sure that's clear.
Absolutely, and any other board members for that matter, because you are voting consciously on my recommendation, that's why you, that's why I provide you with the resources, support, the purchase orders, what it's being used for, that you should be able to articulate that at any given time.
I just wanna make sure that the board doesn't get over into the role of the superintendent, that we are governance.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because when it comes back, the chairman acts on behalf of the school board, and so whatever she's, our, our chairman is doing in good faith to help this school board, we don't want to put her at risk, or that puts that office of the chair at risk at any time. Thank you.
I appreciate that.
I appreciate you saying that, that's one of the reasons I think it's important that this board revisit the threshold, so you won't have such a long list of, you know, recommendations from the superintendent.
Yes, because this consent agenda is quite lengthy.
Yes.
Um, and it's been my concern as a board member under the consent agenda, having the financials, and I believe I've said, I've stated that before, that the financials under the consent agenda is a little concerning to me, because the financials should be coming directly from the office of the superintendent with the finance director, and then the board has an opportunity to hear the reports from the financial department, and then we move forward. But typically, our financials are also lumped into consent agenda, and so we don't want to have to, you don't want the board to have to continue to meet, look at the consent agenda and pull out. I think we have to, the board needs to make a decision, are we gonna continue to keep the financials there? Because it could be that at that time, the chair lends to Dr. Sterling and the finance director to talk about financials. You follow what I'm saying, Natalie?
I'm, I'm with you.
Okay.
I just wanna make a point of correction, our financials are never lumped into the consent agenda. Mr. Ryder comes individually under the report of the finance director every month, as well as the reconciliations. What's pulled out is what's, what the board is informed that these are the funds that we have to extend, therefore, this is what we want, this is the recommendation, and we put it on the consent agenda. What we try to do is make certain that we front load the board before we even bring it to you as a body, because we wanna make certain that you know exactly what we are funding or who would like to fund, uh, either educational programs or operations or something with our facilities and maintenance. So again, our financial report that breaks down everything from our federal grants for our operations is done separately for the board.
Okay, well, Dr. Sterling, because you said you meant of correction, well, we're looking tonight, and there are several items here when I refer to financials under consent agenda. There are several items tonight under consent agenda, not to belay the time, um, that have to do with financials and purchases, and some large numbers here, and that's what I mean, financials under consent agenda.
And, and that's, that's what the consent agenda is utilized for, is items that we have to approve.
I got it, Ms., Ms. Phillips, I totally understand, but there are some financials tonight under the consent agenda for the board to approve.
Right, but, I mean-
I've made my point.
From my perspective, I, I think it's our responsibility to review this before we come here, so we're at a point where we can make the decision, and if we have any questions in detail, um, I feel like it's my responsibility as a board member to ask further prior to getting here, and the reason, I thought the reason why we went to the consent agenda was so that we no longer had to go into detail for each one of them. This is public, um, any, from my understanding, anybody in the community can go in there and pull them up and look and see the same things that we're looking. I find it to be very transparent, and I myself had several questions about some of these, and everything was answered, and like I said, I had a lot of questions, and the questions were answered, you know, to my satisfaction, it's not the first time that I've had questions, but I don't save them until I get to the meeting, and I don't feel like any of it is a surprise, um, and I, I think that's, that's kind of what we should be doing prior to getting here.
And that's one of the reasons why we also polling the board.
But you do, but you do understand that there are financials under consent agenda, because you said to stand to be corrected, that Mr. Ra, he does.
You said the report, the financial report.
Okay, well, I'm talking about-
At the time, against consent.
Okay, I got that. But we do have some large items.
Yes, ma'am, and all board members will hold on those items, along with appropriate documentation.
Yes.
And if we did not receive the appropriate number to support moving forward, they would have been removed from the consent agenda to provide the board with additional information on those items.
Wanna make it clear that it wasn't that it was a misunderstanding, that I didn't understand consent agenda, I do, I just wanted to make a point about that, thank you, Natalie.
All right, so, yes, moving on with the consent agenda, um, first item up, um, is purchase order twenty dash eight fifty-three to Quill. This is for, um, furniture for S P Morton, um, in the receptionist area in the library. Next up is purchase order twenty dash eight fifty-six to Sunny Merriman, that is for buses. Following through with that, um, I, I'm sure most of you, um, Dr. Shelton, you may not, we may need to get you a copy of that. Um, we have a, um, fleet replacement plan that we developed a couple of years back, and following through with that plan, um, this is part of that plan. Next up is purchase order, sorry, my laptop, purchase order twenty dash eight six nine to B S N, and we've got a few in here to B S N, I'm sure you saw, um, this particular one was, um, where they're replacing the scores table and some of the stuff within the gym, like the padded chairs and things like that. Next up is purchase order twenty dash eight seventy, um, that is for uniforms. And one thing I do want to note, um, as we look through these for, um, uniforms and things like that, is sticking with Title IX, we've got both the male and the female sports that we're trying to accommodate, so we're not sticking with just one sport, we're not sticking with just one gender, we're trying to make sure that everyone is accommodated across the board. Next up is purchase order twenty dash eight fifty-five to B S N as well, um, that was wrestling mats. Purchase order twenty dash eight ninety-three to Graeme. And that was floor stripping machines. Next up is, um, twenty dash eight ninety-six, that is for, um, inflatables. Um, just a little clarification on this, because I did ask myself as well, um, for clarification, um, in the past, we've had events at the schools, um, open house at S P Morton, um, field day, um, I think it's like the winter carnival or the fall festival, it's something like that in the fall, um, and there's a few other events where we have rented inflatables, um, this would prevent us from having to rent them, and we would have them available within the division for use. Next up is purchase order twenty dash eight nine seven, and I'm gonna go ahead and call out purchase order twenty dash eight ninety-eight as well, because both of these are to R K Chevrolet, and each one of these are for, um, two vehicles each, so that's a total of four. Two of them are replacement of, um, one is, excuse me, one is for two vehicles, one is for a utility truck. Um, you may recall, we looked at last year replacing one of the utility vehicles for the, um, maintenance department, and we didn't end up replacing that one, that's what this is, it's replacing that maintenance vehicle. Um, and then the two vehicles are replacement of division vehicles in accordance with, um, our replacement, our fleet replacement plan. My mind was sticking, I'm sorry about that. And then we have one, purchase order twenty-one dash oh one four, that's our annual Jason's learning. And then we have purchase order twenty dash one fifteen, and that's our annual achieve three thousand. Does anyone have any questions in regards to these items? I move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion, do we have, and a second, any discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye, by ward, and nays have the same opportunity.
Ward one, aye.
Ward three, I've seen.
Ward four, aye.
Ward five, aye.
At large, aye.
Ward six, aye, or two, aye.
These numbers get me mixed up every time, I'm sitting here counting in my head, can you tell? At least you know I know how to count.
All right, so moving next would be the superintendent's overview, Dr. Sterling, if you would like to come forward to talk about the recover, redesign, and restart.
Yes, thank you so much. Again, good evening, board members. I'm actually excited to, um, present to you just an overview of what we're doing for the Franklin City Public Schools recover, redesign, and restart twenty 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 one. Um, the team is working diligently to look at the state's guidelines, as well as Dr. Lane's guidelines that he has provided the schools on reopening. Our present, our presentation and focus as I prepare, as we, and I say we, the entire, uh, team of administrators, teachers, and central office personnel, parents, and students who will be invited on some of these teams, by the end of the session, when I do the full presentation, you will be able to have the survey results to review, have a deeper understanding of our community input as analyzed by survey results, which launch tomorrow morning, and reopening model recommendations, operations, cleanliness, and procedures, and outline of behavioral health supports being planned for students and staff, and updates around key human resource decisions. Understanding our community results, again, our survey will launch tomorrow, there will be a reverse nine-on-one call for our pa, for our parents and community. The F C P S recover, design, and restart community survey, here is a glimpse of the survey, there are fourteen questions, there are a number of, um, surveys that are out there, that's between eight, five, some ten, but we wanted to take it a little deeper with our community, so again, you'll be able to look at the, uh, survey in advance, and these questions, you will be receiving the survey results at our next meeting, and how we will utilize those survey results to move forward. And not only our community, we will be surveying our employees, they will have a separate survey, it's a quick snapshot of how they feel coming back to school, and, um, how they would like to be most supported. So we're very pleased to be able to launch two separate surveys for our community. And that's where we are. Do you have any questions?
Just a comment, um, I'm glad that you put that, um, behavioral, behavioral piece in there, because we really don't know the mental impact on the children, the staff, or the parents, and that's, that's key to me to look at, because that's going to impact their learning as well. If they don't feel, if they're fearful, if they feel insecure, or whatever, it's going to impact their learning, so putting that in there is very important, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Have we started looking at our options as far as returning and what that might possibly look like for our students? I'm, I'm sure based on V D O E guidelines, there's been some conversations, but have we started looking at directly how that impacts us as a division?
Well, it impacts, yes, we have had conversations for the past, uh, three weeks in detail, I just met with a high school yesterday for almost a two-hour meeting on what does our new normal look like? And what we would like to do is develop plans, not just for COVID, but beyond COVID. So what we're trying to do is be extremely innovative, but it looks like we are, uh, going to be moving towards a hybrid model, even though we haven't received the results back yet from the surveys, we know that there are parents that may not want to send their children back, may want to go full online, we have a half a day option, we have an early college schedule option for the high school, but our most vulnerable students are our elementary students, and those are the ones that we are really taking time to plan, uh, all ti, all sorts of interventions, because you can have learning loss in high school, but you still know how to read. Learning loss for a kindergarten or a first grade or a second or third grade could be detrimental, and when you start moving them into their new normal, so to speak, when we open up full-blown, we wanna make certain that we don't have students that are going to be over identified for special education services because of this period in time that they did not receive the appropriate, um, um, number of minutes or attention or tutorials or direct instruction, so we have to be extremely mindful of that. So this year, we're also going to be challenging the board to look at our policies when it comes to equity, making sure that we, we, making certain that we are not participating in anything systemic, anything systemic within our division that holds our children of color back. These are conversations that we're going to unpack as a board, I feel extremely confident that I stand before you today to be able- to be able to prevent, to present just an outline of what's going to be a deeper, more meaningful conversation for our children of Franklin City.
Thank you for that response.
Dr. Sterling, do we have any way of measuring the effect of this, um this spring's online instruction?
Um yes, and that's going to come in the form of our benchmark testing because when they come in, they're already going to start taking a pre-assessment. But we don't want them to come back in full blown just working uh, you know, five days a week. So two days, we're going to start looking at being dedicated to online learning. Because as you know, uh coming from the university world, now most of the university is online. So we want to make certain that our teachers are honing in and sharpening those skills as well as our students. Again, I commend the board for approving the one-on-one initiative because Franklin City Public Schools was definitely ahead of the game when it came to rolling out new instruction for our children. So I, you know me, I don't see that they'll be that far behind. But we're going to make certain that we give them the appropriate coaching and support so they can gain that traction to continue the race.
I do know you and I know you're on, so.
Thank you so much, Mr. Holt.
Does anyone else have any questions for Dr. Sterling in regard to the recover, redesign and restart survey and plan?
Um with this, with your plan, what thoughts have you made to reinforce the lower level? Because like the pre-K, those are their foundation years. So when you're building a building, if your foundation is insecure, then your building's going to lean. So how are we going to reinforce their foundation?
Well, um I'm glad you said that because early education is, has been a focus of the board as well as the city council. The mayor and I talked one-on-one, I remember ev, when I first got here, as well as every year after, how he has paid specific attention to early childhood, early learning. So what we are doing, especially with our pre-K through three, we are making certain that we revamp the curriculum to make certain that we spiral in that learning loss from March to actually August. I'm not even thinking about, you know, last year, we want to make certain that we spiral in. So if they're in second grade, we're spiraling in that first and second grade uh uh cur, curriculum and content. But we're completely revamping it, we're not just dusting off what we had. We're looking at it, we're peeling the layers back and we're spiraling in those concepts. Also, we have a dedicated curriculum specialist at the elementary school and a literacy coach that has been working every day this summer to make certain that our students have what they need to be successful along with providing professional development to our teachers. S.P. Morton, I'm proud, I'm proud to say is one hundred percent staffed. And we, you already know, we have been working diligently to make certain that our teachers are certified at that level. So our English and our math teachers at S.P. Morton alone have the appropriate certifications and skills to support our students catching up to where they need to be. So yeah, we are, we are pouring that support with our pre-K through third grade students.
In alignment with uh Dr. Shelton's question in reference to pre-K. How, uh where are we with the identification for child find and the pre-K screenings considering COVID and the, we had to close school and the Bright Start program? So that students have been identified for the fall?
COVID has not been a problem. We have actually uh met our numbers for our pre-K students coming in and being screened. And that was done um in April and May. As you can uh see around the community that there are pre-K students. And again, we have been working collaboratively with Smart Beginnings. Ms. Lorraine, as you already know, has made certain that we had all the students funnel to us. So we will have a full, uh you know how they say, big day pre-K, so I'm very excited about that. And we will have a full kindergarten class. But I just want to go back to something that Ms. um, Dr. Shelton had said. Uh I don't know if you know it or not, but our kindergarten students have already had kindergarten words spiral down to them while taking PALS assessments in pre-K. So they have already been exposed to pre-K words, excuse me, kindergarten words while they were pre-K. So is there learning loss? Well, we give, we front load them too. So when they get to the kindergarten level, they're looking like, hmm, we've already seen these words. Exactly. That is why it is so important to work with accelerating your students instead of consistently remediating them, or they will always be behind. You already know, our students take algebra, geometry, earth science, Spanish. Our students are not behind at all. They're actually still ahead of the game walking into Franklin High School with six high school credits. Do I, can I, I, I'm going to stop right here because I can talk, and talk, and talk about where we are pre and post-COVID. We are doing well.
So did we see our students for pre-K, this child find? Was that um, did we see them in person or was that done remotely?
No, we, they met with the counselor, but they didn't do the, you know, the little obstacle course that they go through. No, they weren't able to do that.
So it was more like parent interview?
Yes, it was a parent interview.
Okay.
Yes, the inventory, yes ma'am.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Dr. Sterling?
Excellent. I'll just Sterling report.
Thank you so much.
All right. That leads us into the end of our meeting, um our open session meeting. And I will entertain a motion to go into closed session.
Pursuant to section two point two dash three seven one one of the Code of Virginia, I move that the Franklin City School Board convene in a closed session to discuss and consider the assignment, performance, salaries and resignations of employees and evaluate the performance of departments and schools where such evaluation will necessarily involve discussions of the performance of specific individuals pursuant to Virginia Code section two point two dash three seven one one A one.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, any discussion? Moving by ward, all those in favor signify by saying aye, and of course, nays have the same opportunity.
Ward one aye.
Ward three aye.
Ward four aye.
Ward five aye.
At large aye.
And actually, ward two, not six, aye. All right. So we are in closed session. Thank you very.